Hello, everybody. This is Tim Terranova, Superintendent of the Victor Central School District for our fifth Town Hall since we had to close the school buildings in the middle of March. And next to me on Zoom through Facebook Live is Jay Schickling, our Assistant Superintendent for Business. Jay, I'm glad you're here.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here, Tim. Appreciate the invite.
Jay was, okay, so I was hired in February of 2020, thankfully for myself, by the Board of Education. And Jay was hired like two months before me. So Jay and I are new this year. Jay comes from St. John Fisher and University of Buffalo, where he got many different degrees, well-earned degrees. He spent nine years as a teacher in Rush Henrietta, and also then went on to get his administrative degree in business and finance, and ended up working for Wayne Fingerlake's BOCs as an administrator for business. And then recently, before this year, was what district are you at again?
Marion Central.
Marion Central as the Director of Finance. How could I forget Marion? That's great. So Jay's got tons of experience. Loved the fact that he was a teacher first. And I was lucky enough, I've been lucky in my entire career, my previous district, to work with somebody. Shout out to James Brennan, who's the Assistant Superintendent in West Arundecoyte for Finance. Phenomenal business administrator and leader. And Jay is the same caliber. So I've been really lucky to work with some incredible people in the finance world and really thankful that Jay is with us tonight. This is a little bit of a different Town Hall than the past. This is going to be focused on our budget. And so let me just give you a little background. We always have the same objectives for our Town Halls, and those don't change tonight. So our first objective tonight is about community, making sure that we are focused on the community and focused on our students. And especially the community decision that's going to be made in the next six to seven weeks related to our budget. And it's a community decision. It's really relying on everybody in this area, the Victor Farmington area for Victor Central School District, to the best decision they can possibly make around what's best for our kids in our district, as well as what's best for their own finances. We know that there's a balance right now. It's a really challenging time in the community for financial reasons and health reasons. We understand that, and we also understand it's a challenging time for our district. So this is about community tonight and going forward. It's also about our kids. It's always about our kids. We're trying to do what's best for our 4,000, approximately 4,400 students in the Victor Central School District. And that's what we're focused on. And so it's always going to be about the kids, and you'll hear us mention that many times tonight during the broadcast. It's also a time to give thanks. We continue to give thanks regardless of the topic of this particular Town Hall. We know that there are many people sacrificing for us all over the world, all over the country, and certainly in the Victor Central School District community. As I thank every, as I thank every week, I want to make sure we thank our food service workers that are constantly supporting our families, our secretaries, our district office staff that come in constantly to support whatever they need to support in terms of the running of the district, our mail carriers, our transportation department that's doing a variety of things to make sure that the district continues to run and families are serviced, whether it's Chromebooks or whether it's food deliveries. And of course, all the people that are working at home to educate our kids. Special thanks, as I always do, to the Board of Education. You don't see them as often as you see me, but they are constantly talking to me, constantly running things by me, and we are working as a team of eight. And I appreciate their leadership, appreciate their vision for the district and the work that they do every day in volunteering to support the leadership of this school district. So thank you to the Board of Ed members. And I'm not going to be able to read all their names, but I do want to send a special shout out to our Buildings and Grounds Department. We have 40, probably over 40 members of our Buildings and Grounds Department that are working on shifts across the day, across the evening, to make sure our district is running and supported, and we don't lose ground when we do return, which we don't know when that's going to be. But when we do return, we're not going to lose ground because of these fantastic people that are working. Over 40 individuals for our Buildings and Grounds Department. Thank you to all of you for all the work you're doing and all the dedication that you have. So first three objectives are always community, our students, and giving thanks. And the last objective is communication. Tonight, we are going to continue to be transparent around our focus on the upcoming budget, where we are as of April 22nd in the budget process. We're going to utilize your questions and comments to talk to you about our budget, and we're going to continue to listen to the community. And I know the Board of Education is certainly a part of that listening group, so that the Board of Education in May can make the best decision possible in terms of adopting a budget to be voted on by the community in June. Remember, the timeline has shifted due to the situation we're having with COVID-19. So the Board's going to adopt a budget in May, either early to mid-May, and then that budget will go to the voters in June. We know that we will need to exceed the property tax cap of approximately 1.9%. And we're going to explain why in a second. We know that that's going to require a 60% yes vote to pass the budget. It's called a super majority. Those are the rules of law through New York State. So we want to be transparent around that need and continue to explain why we're doing what we're doing, and make sure we listen to your needs and respond as much as we can. Let me give you a quick update on the process tonight, which is a little bit different. So Jay and I are on Zoom that is being broadcast through Facebook Live. I'm going to try to make sure that we can connect and see your live comments as they happen on Facebook Live. It's going to be primarily focused, however, on the thought exchange questions. We posted a thought exchange on Saturday. I'm looking at my other computer here because these are updated numbers. We had 338 participants, 189 thoughts, and 9,555 ratings of those thoughts. So the way it works, our people create comments based upon the question of, as a member of our school community, what are your questions, comments, and concerns regarding the Victor Central School District budget? So people created comments, and then people came in and rated those comments, either one through five. Five being they completely pretty much agreed with that comment, one being they disagreed with that comment. And it's a pretty interesting social media device, because as you can see, 9,555 ratings occurred on these 289 thoughts. Really excited that over 300 people participated in the thought exchange. And what we're going to do tonight is Jay and I went through all of the 289 thoughts and created themes from those thoughts. And we're going to show you those in a little bit. There's a series of themes, and those themes relate to the thoughts, because many of the thoughts are similar to one another. We're not going to be able to read all 289 thoughts, but we are going to focus on the themes and then read examples of the thoughts that are tied to those themes. And then Jay and myself a little bit, but mostly Jay, will give some answers to those particular themes, as well as evidence to support those answers, and try to clarify any questions that the thought exchange brought forth. So that's going to be the bulk of our meeting tonight, because this is an hour. We are going to attempt, and this is going to be an attempt, because I don't know how long it's going to take to get through the thought exchange, but we are going to attempt to get to some live Facebook questions. If, however, we're not able to get to many of those questions, I promise you that we will answer those questions by the end of this week. So we'll go through them Thursday and Friday and make sure they're publicized on our Facebook page, so that we get answers to your live questions as they go forth. So focus will be on thought exchange, questions, and themes. We're going to show you some slides that give evidence to support answers related to those themes, and then we're going to try to answer any of your live questions. And remember, this is just a start. Today's April 22nd. The Board has until early May to make a final decision on the adoption of the Victor Central School District 2021 budget. So this is a start in terms of communicating what we're doing. Having said that, Jay, do you want to add anything before we get to the slides? Did I miss anything around the focus of what we're trying to do?
No, very well summarized.
Thanks, Jay. Appreciate that. How about we start off with the general proposal currently, as of April 22nd, that the Board heard last week, both the financial piece and the structure behind it? That would be great. You want to explain that a little bit, Jay?
Sure. So last week, we presented to the Board the idea of a proposed budget or potential budget. And we call it that because, for the first time in the history that we're aware of, the executive or the governor has the ability in the middle of our school year to make a determination that state aid may be withheld. So we have these measurement periods where the state is going to reevaluate what their budget looks like, and the first one of those measurement periods is April 1st through April 30th. So it's possible we may find out before we vote on our budget that there is a change to state aid. So that's why this is potential. But it does represent the total expenditure footprint that we believe is going to meet the needs of our students and the programs and services that the Board has interest in funding. So that budget comes in at $78,256,000. That represents a little bit over a 6% increase year over year. Later on, we'll talk a little bit about some of the detail within there. One of the noteworthy items is there are several areas where, due to changes in mandate or certain ratios of staffing levels at the state, we do have some mandatory positions that need to be added. This would represent a tax levy that exceeds the tax cap, and that tax levy would be about a 9.3% increase overall, and that would generate a tax rate projection of $17.14. And again, at this time, assessments are not released until July, so it's very difficult for us to determine what the rate may end up being. We work with the best preliminary numbers in terms of assessment values that we've got, but that projection would lead to an actual rate increase of 7.8%, so a little bit less than the levy increase. What that would mean to a homeowner is if your home is assessed at $100,000 and you utilize the STAR program, you would see a total year-to-year increase of roughly $85. And then that goes all the way up to a home value of $400,000 here with a projection of approximately $450,000. And the median home value in Farmington is around $200,000, and in Victor is around $300,000. So those values are there as well for our residents to look at. Anything else you'd like to add, Dr. Terranova?
No, that's great. I appreciate it. You want to talk a little bit about what the budget actually does in terms of people?
Sure. So this budget adds several positions in special education. And again, that goes back to state requirements for meeting the needs of those students that have special needs, and also adding English language learning positions, because we have seen a demographic increase in students that have a need to learn a second language. As a counselor at our senior high school, because there is a disparity in terms of our ratio of counselors to students at that particular building, and we believe that's a necessity. And then this budget preserves the vast majority, with the exception of just a couple efficiencies of all the programs and services that the district is currently offering, which means class sizes are preserved, which means that any of the clubs, the extracurriculars, any of the enrichment programs that our students are participating in would be preserved with this budget.
Yeah, and I would add that, you know, before the pandemic occurred, the Board was looking at having a greater tax rate increase that would not only support what Jay just talked about, but also add more money to our reserves, which we're going to talk about in a little bit, which are incredibly low at this point, as well as add a few positions in a variety of understaffed areas that we can continue to talk about tonight. The Board has determined as of today that we would like, we understand that the community's hurting right now, hurting right now financially, that people are, some people are out of jobs, people are dealing with health issues. So we have lowered the rate increase to support, along with the fact that state aid is such fluctuation at this point, that we don't know how much state aid we're going to lose. So we've scaled back the focus on the rate increase to, it's still a large increase, 7.8%, to basically sustain existing staff and programs, add the six positions that Jay talked about, special ed, ELL, and then the high school counselor, and also not use our reserves for next year to support the budget. Keep the reserves, which are roughly 3.5% to 4% of our total budget, which is significantly less than surrounding districts, keep them in place so that we can, in future years, start to rectify our problems with our reserves. So it's a stabilization budget for one year that we believe will support us in the future as we move ahead, and we can talk a little bit more about that as well. Anything else about the budget or the staffing, Jay?
No, sir.
Do you want to throw up the themes now on the overhead?
Sure.
And just, we'll talk a little bit about the themes. So I don't know how the font is for you in this. Hopefully you can see this. I know, Jay, you have the ability to increase the font if we need to. Want to just, yeah, thank you very much. I'm trying to look at comments at the same time, so to see if... Make sure you can read that. So we created roughly eight themes. A couple of them are tied together. We didn't create them. We actually found the themes by analyzing the 289 thought exchange questions and comments. So we're going to review these themes, try to give you some examples of the thoughts that you should have access to if you went into the thought exchange between Saturday and today. And then we're going to talk a little bit about the information in these themes. So our first theme is the district is doing a great job for our kids. We've already had loss with the pandemic. We don't need any more loss. Raise the taxes. We're shocked about how low our per pupil expenditure is. Now, we put the second theme next to this because it's different, but yet it gets to the same concept. Well, you know, and basically it is, why do we need to increase the tax rate by over 7%? The first comment talks about how shocked people are about the low per pupil expenditure. The second comment is, why now? This is not the best time with the economy and job loss. This couldn't have happened overnight. Didn't we have a huge surplus? What happened to it? How do we know you will spend the money wisely in the future? So let me just give you some examples of some of these comments. So in terms of doing a great job, and we do need to raise the taxes, we're shocked about how low the tax rate is, as well as the per pupil expenditure, there are thoughts such as, the proposed budget should show what needs to be done to get Victor caught up to an education and equipment level that other districts already have. The budget should allow for equipment and staffing, put our students on equal footing with comparable schools. One of the most significant improvements my children will see in their school. I want my kids to have a good education, and there'll be money to be spent on children. We only live in Victor for the amazing school district. We want to keep all the wonderful teachers and staff employed. We love everything the school district has to offer and wouldn't want to see it affected negatively by COVID or the budget. Let me see if there's any more. There's a bunch of these comments. We appreciate those. Victor's worth every cent. Our college-age son says Victor prepared him well for the next chapter. The transition from Victor to college was seamless, both in class and in athletics. We need to continue to offer wide array of class subjects in the high school so that students can fully explore their interests. Increase taxes. Families move to Victor for the great education and opportunities afforded to students. If the budget fails, these opportunities will be cut. I'm okay with a tax increase, especially after this year's pandemic impacting our children's education and extracurricular activities. Kids experienced trauma, and all students lost valuable time in the classroom. We need to support furthering the education. Passing a budget that supports all programs is a critical cut. Decimate programs and deny kids valuable educational experiences. So those are examples of the first theme. In terms of why now, this is not the best time. We also have a variety of those examples, too, in terms of comments from individuals on our thought exchange. As I move through these. I do have grandchildren in the district and would like to see the standards still set as high as they've been for academics and athletics. With budget cuts possibly looming, I am very concerned that our current pandemic has put us in a very precarious position regarding financial support. These are extraordinary times with unprecedented challenges and hardships for Victor families. The budget should not add to the financial burdens that families are facing. That the needs of the students are met on a day-to-day basis, I think that's most important. There needs to be a balance between being fiscally responsible and making sure our students have access to the resources that they need. Let's see if there's a couple more of these. Victor has done more with less for many years and kept taxes low. The timing is terrible, but the district needs to override the tax cap. If the district doesn't have the means to support quality education in all aspects, people will be complaining about more than taxes in the future. So this gives you, actually, I'll read a couple more. Please use the funds wisely. We are upset at having to raise our payments. Please use this money wisely and be clear and tell us where our extra money's going. Show us where the money went, and I will consider a tax increase. Please be willing to investigate loss of funds instead of ignoring it. It doesn't look good. Any chance to find out where the loss of money went? There was a huge surplus recently, and we have a $2 million deficit now. Please help us understand where the money went, and that it will not happen again. So as you can see, those are just some examples of comments related to these two themes. Jay, do you want to talk a little bit about why the district, or what situation the district is in, to some degree? Why, please?
Sure. So we have, at one point, we circulated a budget information or fact page, and it really gave a summation of the district's financial status. One of the things that's being displayed here is since the year 2000, the tax rate in the district. And the high point in 2004, the tax rate reached $20.92. And throughout the, throughout time, because the district has been very fiscally responsible and also has benefited from a great amount of property growth and development, that tax rate has declined fairly precipitously until 2010. And in this range, 2010 to 2012, is when the tax cap was enacted and also the foundation aid formula in the state. And so at that time, the state used a formula to determine how much aid schools were going to get, and that formula became locked in and frozen because of the financial crisis then. So at any one of these subsequent years, Victor is receiving aid based upon the number of students it had enrolled prior to 2010 as a measurement. And we know that since then, we've had a 12% growth in enrollment. That also means that the tax cap was implemented at a time when the tax rate reached a bottom point. And comparatively to other schools, we'll take a look at that in a little while, but it really noticeable and substantial difference in terms of how low this tax rate is comparison to other schools, and has remained as such and actually declined because of the rate of development going on in the district. And this is a comparison to the average tax rate of Ontario County school districts, Wayne County school districts, and Monroe County school districts. And so Victor's tax rate in comparison is close to $3 less than the average for Ontario County schools, close to $6 less than the average for Wayne County schools, and close to $8 less than the average for Monroe County schools. And this information is reported by the New York State Comptroller from their website portal. To the question of surplus, you know, any, any school district, when you, when we pass a budget and our voters approve it, that's the maximum amount of money that we're allowed to spend, and we have to budget with certain variables in mind. So for example, we know we may have employees that go out on maternity leave or paternity leave because they've had a child. We're not permitted to ask who that's going to be. So we need to know that we've got enough money and salaries to pay for a substitute and to pay for that person's leave benefits. We know that we may experience employee turnover, and we may have employees come in and sign up for healthcare contracts that the prior employee did not have. So we know that we need to have contingency there to cover that. So when we pass a budget, that is essentially our plan for the worst, but hope for the best, because we know that we cannot spend one cent more than that approved budget. And so when we have a surplus at the end of the year, that means that we have not fully expended our budget, and it means that our revenue sources were greater than our expenditures. There's only two things we can do with that surplus. So we can appropriate it to lower taxes, which we have a routine of doing every year, and the remainder of that surplus becomes reserve balances, and that's New York State law. The chart here shows that as a percent of our operating budget, Victor's reserves contain roughly 5% or will at the end of this school year, in comparison to all of the Wayne Fingerlake schools with 17.7% and Monroe County schools with over 20%. And so the bond rating agency that looks at our finances and determines when we do bus purchases or capital projects, the quality of our bonds is expecting to see roughly a 16% of operating budget in fund balance. And some examples here, our Employee Retirement Reserve, these comparable suburban districts in the Rochester area, their reserve balances range from 2.1 to 7.2 million. Our balance is 265,000. We know that we have open challenges against tax surcharge, so commercial properties are taking, taking up lawsuits to challenge the value of their property, and our exposure, if they were to be successful in those cases, is over 2 million, and our reserve there contains 450,000. We know that our balances are at a level that, through the, through the comptroller's determination, puts us at risk of being fiscally stressed. And lastly, as a result of these constraints on our revenue, looking at the per pupil expenditure between Victor at $16,530, that's what we, we pay to educate as a community of student. The average expenditure of a Monroe County school is as close to 25,000, of a Wayne County school is over 27,000, and of an Ontario County school, on average, is 29,000. So if you were to take the difference between that Monroe County average and Victor's expense per student and multiply that by the number of students in our district, for us to reach that level of expenditure per student would be a budget increase of over $35 million. And the proposed budget increase for next year is roughly 4.5 million. So I think that's certainly indicative of the district's ability to operate efficiently. And I believe that's it for that topic. Dr. Terranova, is there anything you would add?
Well, I'd just say the, you summarized it very well. I mean, the district has tried to keep taxes as low as possible. We will talk in a second, actually, around the state and county influence on our revenue. And it's resulted in, because of some significant concerns around revenue coming from other sources, it's resulted in the lowest per pupil expenditure, at least two years ago, in the entire state. And if it's not now, it's probably one, the second or third lowest in the entire state, and it's impacting us significantly. So that's really the theme behind it. The next theme that we want to talk about, what is the role the state and county play in helping taxpayers fund the school budget? Also, what alternative funding is available, like through BOCs? So let me read you a few of these comments. It was mentioned that no sales tax revenue is allocated. What can we do as a community to get this addressed with legislative representatives? As you shared, can, can be, it can be another revenue stream as more businesses have moved into the community. The state should realize the need for foundation aid for districts like ours and not limit aid based on the rates shown in the budget workshop. I'm concerned about our district being extremely underfunded. As a proud member of the Victor School District community, I want to ensure that our children continue to receive a high-level education and experience. I'm frustrated with the way the state determines funding for school districts. Current funding for our district is not taken into account the significant increase we have experienced in enrollment. We have low per pupil funding, but like to understand why we aren't petitioning the state for acceptance. Funding is frozen at the old numbers. If the state were properly funded, our district for growth without penalizing other districts, our district's growth would not be penalized, and we wouldn't require such a tax cap exception. What would it take for Ontario County to start sharing the sales tax with schools, as apparently other counties do? There's no reason Victor and other Ontario County schools should not be entitled to funding this way. How can residents support the school in getting Ontario County to give schools some sales tax revenue, especially since Victor supplies most of it through Eastview? If residents could see that receiving a certain percentage in sales tax revenue would help the school, I believe more support could be sent to the county. Why are we not getting funding from Ontario County sales tax? I was shocked to learn that this does not exist. Maybe this needs to be addressed as well. And then one more thought. Jay, do you want to talk a little bit about sales tax and foundation aid?
Absolutely. So foundation aid is the primary source of aid for school districts. There's really two ways the state finances school districts. One of them is foundation aid, which is based upon metrics of community Finances school districts. One of them is foundation aid, which is based upon uh metrics of community, property, wealth and student enrollment. And the other are expense-based aids, which are directly related to how much a school district has spent. So um when we do a capital construction project, for example, our aid rate is 75%. So over the course of um an amortized life of that project. We will receive 75% of that value back from the state in building aid. Um when we uh buy buses, when we spend money on gasoline salaries for people to transport our students. That is um met with expense-based aid for transportation services. And when we purchase things through BOCs, for example. Um infrastructure services, um educational services, computer equipment. Um those things can also receive state aid. And so we we recoup 65% approximately. Of what we would spend at BOCs on those things. And so we do look at um maximizing our utilization of. Uh those expense-based aids so that our, we're spending our money wisely and getting the maximum we can reimbursed. And then foundation aid is the only category that's really based upon uh metrics of your community and your enrollment. And that is the one that was frozen um during the fiscal crisis in 2008. And so uh the amount that the formula calculates. That Victor should receive based on its current enrollment is $20 million. The amount that we are actually being funded is 12.25 million dollars. So that's a discrepancy of $7.5 million. On the state aid side. Um in terms of sale- sales tax distribution, um we didn't want to name individual schools here. Um but Monroe County does share uh its its sales tax with the schools that uh operate within its boundaries. The value to the nearest thousand that Monroe County shared last year was uh 71,400,000. Uh Wayne County also shares a component of sales tax that's a fixed amount at 5.4 million. And Victor does have um certain components of our community that live in those jurisdictions. And so we do. To some degree, recoup about 70 to 75,000 in aid per year. Uh but in comparison to some of the districts that reside fully within those counties, um some of these Monroe County school districts are. Uh being supported by the county to the tune of 3.3.5 to up to 5.7 million dollars, 6.1, I'm sorry, million dollars. Um and in Wayne County, a couple of um our counterparts that have student enrollments a little bit lower than ours are seeing. Roughly 870,000 and 670,000. Um and so i- if that were to um come to fruition in a system that matched either one of those counties, we could anticipate. Uh a million dollars, $2 million, something to that effect in terms of additional support on a recurring basis.
So I do want to say that um we're working with Jack Maron from Ontario uh and Peter Inglesby from uh Farmington. Uh Jack Maron from Victor and Peter from uh Farmington appreciate the work that they're doing with us right now in Canadagua and Geneva. And the district's Ontario County. So we're hoping to try to work with the county to get a win-win. Uh in terms of some more support for the school district as well as support for the county in sales tax. Um we have fought very hard and continue to fight hard to fix the foundation aid formula. Um that's a challenge right now as the state is basically broke. Um but we do feel we're in an unfair unfair tier in terms of being penalized for a lack of uh. For our enrollment increase, even though we're not getting the funds for that enrollment. Uh so we continue to work with our state legislators and those are very important people. Your state senator uh as well as your state assemblyman. And I know there's elections going on in November for those positions. Um they're very important in terms of advocating for state aid. And uh uh support through that because state aid and sales tax would definitely lessen the burden on the property tax. That we currently need to go out with. So that is something long-range we need to keep focused on. Um the second piece to this p- this uh theme is may um uh maybe uh in favor of raising taxes. But what is the role of taxes in total revenue? What would be the specific impact on housing costs if you if you raise taxes? Jay kind of answered this already. I'll read you a few uh thought exchange comments tied to this. My thoughts are that our taxes should be raised and that the board should approve this. We need to hear exactly the monthly amount of increase. So we can help support our children's education, prevent education cuts. The tax increase is not as large as people assume. Please get the information out there. Um a whole more thought exchange comments. Where can we find an outline showing where this increase would be reflected? It's important for everything to be completely transparent to the community. Um okay. Should be a couple more here. At least one more. Transparency of the budget. I would like for the budget to be clear and transparent. I think hiding the issues is what caused this deficit. Um I'm not sure anybody tried to hide any issues, but we're certainly being as transparent as possible. Please clearly state how much the district gets per $200,000 home in taxes and specific cost per student. If people understand that the new home being built uh costs the district uh less than they're paying. Or more than they're paying in taxes, people will get it. Um and then there's a couple of questions, uh Jay, around um the median uh price of a of a house. As well as uh. I think uh something related to. Why can't we uh let me just read this. Why can't we look for loans to cover current budgetary shortages? So generally, just if you want to maybe throw that slide back up of what the cost would be on a homeowner and then talk just for a second about uh. About the median price of a home and this concept of taking out a loan, which I don't believe we can do.
Um that's that's correct. Yes. Um our our debt is uh approved. In advance by the taxpayers and and it's only in conjunction with capital items such as bus purchases and building projects. Um in terms of re- revenue distribution, we fund our budget um primarily through property taxes. So the ratio is roughly 2/3rd property taxes to 1/3rd state aid. Um based upon the the current budget proposal or the current the current state budget. Um with the potential to to lose state aid and our tax override, we believe that would be closer to um. Almost 70% property taxes and 30% state aid. In terms of the impact to a home, again, uh in the Farmington area, uh according to Zillow. Uh which is the the best tool that we've got to estimate a median value for a home. That's that's roughly equivalent to 200,000. So that would be about $18 to $19 per month um uh burden upon a homeowner. And then in the Victor community, it's a a little bit shy of 300,000. So. Um roughly about $30 per month. And that's taking into account that homeowners would get the star exemption. Um one of the things that has sunsetted through law is the property tax relief credit check. The check that was based upon a district being compliant with the tax cap law. And so there would be no additional penalty to a homeowner um for supporting this budget in in that context.
Thank you. Anything else you want to add about uh? About this specific, did you do, I didn't hear, did you do the median home value or not?
Yes.
Okay. So let's go back to our themes, uh please. Uh if we raise taxes to this degree, where will the money go? What is the plan, especially long-term moving forward? I would want the money to go towards academics, need a strong focus on upgrading technology. I'm just going to read a couple of these themes. Uh actually thought questions. I'm supportive of the budget and increases in taxes along as the money is going towards academic purposes. Increase classroom technology, smaller class sizes and up-to-date buildings. We need to ensure that tools and technology for teachers and students are funded. This will ensure that teachers have supplies. They need to continue offering rich lessons and diverse diverse methods of teaching. The current global crisis clearly shows that Victor is sadly unprepared on a tech and equipment level. Victor needs one-to-one technology and the education of students on how to use it. This community wants to support the district and teachers and programs. Give us a chance to know exact dollar amounts of tax rouse of increases. I think we did that, Jay. So you can stop carrying taxes and support the school. I hope this distance learning situation we are in provides some perspective about our technology and staffing needs compared to other districts. We're expected to perform like districts in Monroe County. We need the funds necessary to do so. So let me comment, uh actually. One more, one more thought. This pandemic has clearly shown that Victor is lagging behind in technology. We need the equipment and the education to go along with it. I understand economic times are tough, but we can't take that out on students and staff and continue to deny what they need. So um in terms of what what was the money going to in the plan, what this year, as we've mentioned. We are trying to sustain the current staffing and programming. We are attempting to support our uh kids, our students uh with the more more significant. Uh complexities and needs, whether that's students with disabilities or our uh ELL students. And also, we're trying to make a dent in the social emotional needs of our students by adding a high school counselor. Which is significantly understaffed right now uh in terms of counseling. Um in terms of our technology, we do believe, I do believe that we are significantly understaffed in technology. I think our director is doing a great job with two technicians, but they have a director of technology and two technicians for district of 4,400. Is um is really just uh unbelievable, to be honest with you. And to and to enable us to. Uh use one-to-one technology in an integrated fashion so that kids are using 21st century learning skills. We can't do that right now, although our staff is working unbelievably hard to try to make it happen. So that's an area of focus. Long term, we need to, you know, settle the budget this year. Start to strategically plan forward with community input. Uh as we get through this pandemic. And one of the things we'll be talking about, of course, is uh is instructional planning and uh. For the future, which will include technology, financial planning for the future. And moving forward with how in financially, we're going to support that reserve bank that is critically low while. Continuing to gradually increase staffing in the needed areas. Uh that Jay I think is going to show in a second without breaking the backs of our taxpayers. Um that will require most likely another uh tax uh exceeding of the tax cap. Potentially as early as the year after this year. Uh we're not going to sugarcoat that. We're going to be completely transparent with you. Uh we have the lowest per pupil expenditure, one of the lowest of two or three districts in the state. Uh you saw that we're thousands of dollars behind in our um in our cost uh uh and cost for our students. Compared to other districts in the area. Um so we need to some degree to catch up. We're not going to be able to catch up completely. We're not asking to do that, but over, it's going to take time. We're not going to do this in one year. It's a strategic plan. That will really emphasize strategic planning starting next year to make sure we're putting our finances in the right places. Uh is there, there's a couple of slides, Jay, you wanted to show in terms of our staffing potentially around this?
Um yes. So and I'll I'll try to make it uh brief in terms of the commentary for these. Um uh so these are the Board of Education priorities that we talked about last Thursday and uh in our public board meeting. Um again, and I think Dr. Taranova did a nice, a a really nice job of summarizing the Board of Education's standpoint. Um this is the expenditure structure for the potential budget. And one of the things that I think it's important to note is when we look at an increase in salary, that's not directly tied to the. Raise that all of our staff are getting. So that's going to be relative to new staffing positions. In some cases, turnover um or new positions from last year that need to be reflected. And also then our contractual increases. Um when we look at uh some of the things that happened in the state budget, the state changed some of the rules in terms of. Uh how how students are placed, uh high-needs students are placed in um state-run homes and the. They're shifting some of that cost to districts. So we also have to budget for that, which we do out of our special aid fund. So that that's the last line, the inter-fund transfer. Um something to note here is is a decrease in debt service. So when we talk about capital projects or capital work. There's actually a market decrease in this budget in terms of the um costs that are going to support that. And those costs are also offset by, as a revenue source by state aid. So if we didn't have that expense to pay, we also would not be recovering the state aid to support it.
And Jay, I'm sorry to interrupt. Do you do you have the slide on the staffing ish situation right now? The there. Can we just go to that one just because of timeframe? I want to make sure we get to these.
Uh so.
Yeah, go ahead.
What this slide does is it it compares us to a peer group of districts, other suburban districts in the Rochester area. That could be Monroe, it could be Wayne Finger Lakes. And i- in the districts that have reported data, it compares us as a rank. So this column is the percent of our budget that we spend on something. So in terms of instructional salaries, how much money we allocate to pay the t- the teachers and the staff that are delivering instruction. We have a greater component of our budget than any one of these comparison districts going to funding that. On a per pupil expenditure basis, which is the right-hand column, that's still the smallest amount of money per pupil. So while we're allocating the most of it to instruction to address some of those concerns about, we want to make sure it's going to the classrooms, it is. But on a per pupil basis, that's still the smallest in comparison to any other district. Um in terms of instructional media and technology, the percent of our budget that goes to that area, it ranks 18th out of 21 schools. And in terms of a per pupil expense, that's 19th out of 21. And in terms of all operations, so buildings, grounds. Um infrastructure, support, central printing, um all of those operational areas. As a percent of budget are the smallest of any of those 21 schools, both in terms of the size in the budget, but also a per pupil expenditure. And we we gather that from a a company that runs analytics for us.
So this slide definitely shows obviously where we are staffing-wise um in terms of different areas that are critical. Do you mind showing also the slide that compares our total expenditures with the um number of students in our building, please?
Oh, yes. I'm going to have to skip around. I apologize.
Okay, you're doing fine. All right, let me just mention this real quick. This is a slide from the 1920 school year in terms of total budget. For our district and other districts around and I, as well as the number of students. And you can see. That although we, Victor is fifth in terms of student enrollment, and these are similar-sized districts. So we use basically 12 to 13 to 1500 above us to roughly 1300 below us. This is not every district in the area. But these are districts of comparable size. And you can see where Victor's total budget corresponds to their students. In relation to other districts around us. So for example, Hilton has approximately, and by the way, when I compare ourselves to other districts. I am um being positive about these other districts for the impact that they're having on their schooling and the financial support they're having. So this is not a dig at any of these districts. It's just the facts that uh how they're supporting financially their district compared to right now Victor. Hilton has 100 less kids and is spending roughly $7 million more a year on their students. Canandagu, third from the bottom, has roughly 900, 850 less students. Yet is about $2.5 million more per year in spending than Victor Central School District. So this particular chart is very important in terms of clarity of our spending challenges moving forward. And what we need to do uh potentially with the budget. This being said. We are asking for a pretty significant tax uh rate increase uh above the cap. Uh so Jay, could you, we do, there are many questions that are coming up around what happens if we do not exceed the cap and do not reach. Achieve 60% of the vote. Um so let me go over that with you briefly. Uh in terms of tax cap compliance, uh again, how much money, uh I'm I'm jumping all over the place, Jay, I apologize. How much money are we asking currently? Again, this could change as the board adopts this in May. What are we currently asking to go above the tax cap?
Um is it a dollar figure, 3, 3,380,000?
So we're looking at a $3,380,000 increase over the tax cap. Um and if that doesn't happen, that means we have to reduce by that amount, correct?
Correct.
And if we have to reduce over $3 million to try to right-size our budget by reaching the tax cap. And we would have to do that if we don't get 60% of the yes vote in June. And these are the areas, and this is a menu. This is not finalized. We don't want to scare everybody, but at the same time. It's very difficult to cut $3 billion out of a $75 million budget. It's typically people that cost the most money. That's salaries and benefits. So we would have to decrease teachers, put teacher coaches and teacher leaders back in the classroom. Class sizes would increase. We would look at all areas, athletics, co-curricular and clubs. Uh administrative positions could potentially be looked at, certainly enrichment programs. Um and and again, it would try to be starting with as far away from the classroom as possible. And then moving forward to see how much we could save that way and then moving forward towards the classroom. But um we definitely would would impact. But we definitely would impact significantly from clubs to athletics to class sizes to high school courses, to instructional leadership, to enrichment programs, to administration. It would hit all aspects of it. And unfortunately, we're not trying to threaten you, but this is the reality of what happens as we are in a financial situation that we're in, and we need to try to get over $3 million to stabilize our budget for the first year. So I just wanted to touch on that. Jay, we're also hearing, could we go back to the themes, please? I'm sorry for jumping all over the place.
No problem.
It's 7:20, so I want to be cognizant of people's time. And again, this is the first town hall on the budget. We're going to have another one either next week or the week after, but we're certainly going to have a second one. Let's go down to what role do capital projects play in budgeting? Seems like we just passed a capital project for millions. Now we need to raise taxes. There were many, there were a variety of thought exchange comments around the capital project, and why are we raising taxes after we just made billions of dollars in capital projects? Jay, could you maybe talk a little bit about that, please?
Sure. And that one, I don't have any fancy graphics to illustrate. In the way that New York State prescribed school finances operate, Victor Central Schools runs its operating budget in one fund. The capital project fund is a separate fund. And so when we put forward an operating budget to the community, we're not really looking at real-time any of the expenses relative to that capital project that has been voted on. So the primary method of financing the capital project that was approved in the fall is going to be a capital reserve fund. So when we talk about those surpluses from prior years that we've accumulated in a savings account, that's going to finance a component of it. And then we have the approval of the voters to bond for the remainder. So our cash or the money that we're going to use to finance that project comes from those bonds. And all of that is encompassed in a separate fund that, at the current time, has no impact over what's going on in the current operating budget. Now eventually, when those bonds are issued, those debt payments will become part of the district's budget. And so those debt payments are reflected in these lines here in the total budget detail, and we're actually seeing a decrease in this coming year for prior year's debt payments as there, as certain debt is aging off. One of the things that happens with capital projects is you want to try to stabilize that because the state does support capital projects with 70, in our case, 75% of that expense is aided. And so our residents are paying taxes to the state of New York, and the state is pooling that money together as building aid. And if we were not taking care of our buildings or making those upgrades, we also would not be claiming that state aid. So other school districts would be going forward with their projects, and our residents would be paying taxes to the state that was becoming building aid to other districts. So it's our perspective that it's important to keep our buildings and grounds in the best shape possible and also capture as much as that building aid is possible without creating an undue burden upon our taxpayers to support any unaided component of that.
So thanks for that description, Jay. Anything else you want to add around capital projects and the role they have? Or did you pretty much, to pretty much summarize it there?
I think that summarizes it from my perspective.
Can we, I'm skipping all over here. The top theme on this page, debate over spending and discretionary areas, athletics versus academics, teacher classes. Do you mind putting, we've seen some comments that are critical of sports and athletics and the cost of those sports and athletics. And I just want to make sure we get the facts out there in terms of those costs.
Sure. So this chart shows, again, that comparison peer group of suburban districts in the area or in the region and a per pupil expense. So ours is highlighted in yellow. Ours is a little bit below average in terms of per pupil expense on athletics. The average of those districts, our peer group, is roughly $255. And in terms of our budget, athletics represents 1.34% of our budget in the current year. So if we were to seek reduction in terms of athletics, you know, the entirety of the athletics program would not be sufficient in terms of addressing our budget gap.
It's also, what, a little less than 2% of the total budget?
1.34% of the total budget.
And I'm not here to just be a proponent for athletics, but I do want to tell people that athletics is one part of co-curricular and extracurricular experiences that make the Victor School District a comprehensive district and one of the best districts around. And that includes life and decal and musicals and robotics and winter guard and the whole music program and our marching band, and I'm leaving many different things out. But they go together with athletics to really support a comprehensive whole-child education that I'm believing as superintendent, who took the position and went for the position because of that comprehensive education that people do not want to lose. So we understand sometimes people's frustration around costs for those types of experiences and activities, but I have to tell you as superintendent that I believe in those extracurricular, co-curricular experiences. I can see what they do for kids. The cost is not a significant part of this budget, and it is important to us. Could we also go to, because we're running out of time, it's 7:26. Let's go to that last theme, Jay. I just want to, I want to address this real quick. Debate over whether we should compare ourselves with Monroe County schools or not. Now, there are some comments that say we should be comparing ourselves to Monroe County schools. There's others that say things like Ontario and Monroe County are so different that they can't be compared. Find a better comparison. Here's a comment that says Pittsburgh High School's national ranking was 86th, Honey Eye Falls was 238th, and Victor's was 813th. Don't even dare to use Monroe County taxes as an excuse to pay our taxes. So appreciate the comment. I think what this person is relating to is the US News and World Report ranking of our high school, Victor Central or Victor Senior High School. So Victor was ranked 813th out of 17,000 high schools in the country, in the top 7% of the entire country. They were ranked in the top 6% in the entire state, and they were ranked in the top 5% out of 25 local school districts. In fact, some incredible districts were ranked ahead of Victor, the two Pittsords, Bendet and Sutherland, Honey Eye Falls, Lima, and Brighton. And then Victor was ranked fifth in terms of their academic achievement, graduation rate, and other areas that they looked at. I feel pretty good as a new superintendent who had nothing to do with those rankings, by the way. It's all about the work that was done before me and certainly by the work of the existing staff. I feel pretty good that, A, our K through eight program had a lot to do with supporting our nine through 12 program. I also feel really good that we achieved at a high rate, including, there's a lot of other districts than Pittsburgh, Brighton, and HFL in Monroe County. And when it comes to the fact that, you know, are we comparing ourselves to Monroe County or not, actually, from an academic and comprehensive education standpoint, I think it's clearly that we not only compare ourselves to Monroe County, but our kids compete and do the things and have opportunities at the same or higher level than many of the schools in Monroe County. That's a fact, and it's been there for years. Where I'd like to see us compete actually with Ontario and Wayne County is financially. If you remember, and you see the slide here, we are significantly underfunded compared to Wayne County and Ontario County, much less Monroe County. So you're right, I'm not sure, we can't even think about comparing ourselves to Monroe County financially, but we certainly should try to compare ourselves to Sunday Radio Ontario and Wayne County financially, because the achievement and effort and opportunity for kids at Victor Central School District is at a level of high level in terms of Monroe County comparison. So I just wanted to mention that. And in close, you know, we got a couple of minutes left, and I wish we could get to more live, we didn't get to any live questions and comments, but we are going to answer them as much as we can in the next two days. We didn't get to every theme, but we're going to talk more about these themes as we move forward. I know, again, as superintendent, that there's a significant challenge ahead. There's a balance and a need, and there needs to be perspective on all sides in terms of what this community's going through right now, how people are financially strapped, how people are losing jobs. It is a horrible time financially, especially to go out and ask for an increase in taxes. I hope, however, whether you agree or disagree, that we have given you data to show why we're doing what we're doing, how we're going to do it, that we're not going to try to do it all at once, and that we will strategically plan forward to keep in mind our financial situation and the financial situation of our community in relation to the needs of this incredible district. The Board of Education is listening, they're listening right now, they will continue to listen to your comments. We want your comments, whether that's emailing us, or whether it's in the comments on Facebook, or whether it's emailing me. But we definitely need to make some significant decisions in the next few weeks and then bring it to the community to decide what is best for the Victor Central School District community and what is best for the Victor Central School District students. So Jay, anything to add before we close? You did a fantastic job explaining things, and I'm sorry I jumped all over the place, but anything you want to add?
Thank you. No, thank you for the invitation. You know, from my perspective, as somebody who works on the business side of things, we as a district are not able to recruit the best staff at a severe reduction from any other school district in what we would need to pay them. We can't fuel our buses or provide energy to our buildings at a substantially less cost than any other district can, and we can't provide employee benefits at a lower cost than any other district can. And so when we look at how we compare in terms of what we're spending per student, it's because we have less of those things. And, you know, strategically, that's what Dr. Taranova is talking about, is having a plan in place to make sure that we're doing that in a wise and sustainable fashion.
So thank you very much, Jay. Thank you for all the work. Again, we will be on again next week on Wednesday at 6:30. School buildings are closed through May 15th. We hope to get more information around that as we move forward. We're going to talk more specifically about the budget in another town hall. Again, it'll either be next week or the week after, and in between then, we're going to do more conversations with you around how things are going in this incredibly unique time, how you're doing both socially, emotionally, and physically, because we know that your mental health and your physical health are the most important things. To the students out there, if you were watching about this, watching this financial situation, please know that we have your best interests at heart. Please know that we're thinking of you, especially our seniors, and take care of yourselves. So thank you very much, and we're going to close out Facebook Live. Have a great evening.